It's chairs different. All right, kicking things off, we got item forty seven citizens time. So anybody in the room who would like to say anything? Yeah, you want to go? Go ahead.
So we've sat in this office for how long now, how many years?
I've got four.
Mike, you got what, twelve years in it? Right, two. Jimmy, you got three years.
Seven.
All we've ever heard from Nick is how bad these chairs are. Haven't heard a word yet about these brand new chairs that we got. So just wondering if you're ever going to say anything about.
Are these new? Or are these just from a different room? Where are these?
Brand new chairs.
Brand new chairs?
Just wondering, that's all.
I mean, they're comfortable.
Okay, that's all we.
Is that all you wanted to know?
Yeah, that's it.
That's all right.
Thank you, Nick.
So this is a weird, weird tangent.
So that's my citizens time for the night. Good night, everybody.
All right, thanks, Joe. If after the meeting, anyone would like to come and try one of the chairs, you may move on. Anybody else in the room for citizens time? If you're online, just raise your hand and we'll unmute you. Otherwise. Okay. Moving right along, forty eight, we got some appointments, Treasury Collector Office. Mr. G N O, come on down.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Boris and the Slack Board. It's a pleasure to be here this early in the agenda. Mr. Priest, I appreciate that. Previous chair had me waiting for hours usually.
You're welcome, Gary.
No. Tonight before you, as the agenda told, I have two requests for open positions that exist in the Treasury Collector Department. I have a, one of those positions was an employee who transferred to the Accounting Department in October and the position remained open. The other position is a result of Terry Clement, who's the Assistant Collector at the present time and has spent twenty-four years in the department, who is, gave her notice to retire coming the end of the month. But I'll talk about that at another meeting. With some reorganization within the department this evening, I have before you Anna Maria De Rosa for the position of Deputy Treasury Collector. Anna has a Bachelor of Arts, Bachelor of Science, excuse me, in Mathematics and a Master's in Business Administration. She spent the last year and a half with the town of Andover as the Assistant Treasury Collector, approximately a year and a half with the town of Littleton in that capacity, and spent some time in the private sector. And we're very, we got a very good response on these positions and through our reviews and interviews, we have given, we all came to the same, it was unanimous among the team people doing the interviews to offer Anna Maria the position, and there she is this evening. Any questions? I, it's my request that we, the board, appoint Anna Maria De Rosa for the Deputy Treasury Collector position.
Now, thank you, Gary. With Gary's recommendation, I appoint Anna Maria De Rosa to the position of Deputy Treasury Collector in the town of Burlington and ask that the board waive its fifteen day waiting period.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain. Five zero zero. Congratulations.
The second position we have this evening is a Senior Collector, which will be taking over the, some of the responsibilities of Terry's position. This evening before you, I have Paul Schwartzman. Paul is a Burlington resident. As I found out this, this afternoon, a town meeting member. We never had that discussion.
I'm not going to make him a bad guy.
He has been with, Paul has a Bachelor of Science in Computer Science, has been employed at Dell EMC for approximately fifteen, sixteen years and a few positions as a financial analyst and also working in global service contracts and has a very strong background in computer science and softwares. And that's what, as we went through the interview process, that was really something we thought of, we're losing probably the person with the best institutional knowledge in our department, if not in Town Hall of Munis. And so I'm looking forward to Paul taking over some of that position and growing in the Senior Collector position, role. So this evening before you, I would like the approval of Paul Schwartzman for the Senior Collector position. Oh, I did forget, he is also the head wrestling coach for the town of Burlington.
Thank you, Gary. With Gary's recommendation, I wish to appoint Paul Schwartzman to the position of Senior Collector in the town of Burlington and ask that the board waive its fifteen day waiting period.
Second. Okay, moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain. Five zero zero.
Congratulations.
All right. Item forty-nine, we've got approval and appointment with the Board of Health. Weiner, Luminallo, come on down. The floor is yours.
We're here to finalize the Triton Coalition. Thank you very much for the selectmen who attended our kickoff. And that is a large, three-year Public Health Excellence Grant for the towns of Burlington, Lexington, and Wilmington to provide key shared services. Burlington will administrate this grant and bring more than a hundred thousand dollars per year to this community. These towns will work independently as well as together and cooperatively to bring health, wellness, and expanded services and inspection to this community and all three communities. The grant represents a new direction and new era in public health, Massachusetts Department of Public Health. We have approved it, the Board of Health approved it, and we now are asking the selectmen also to approve this grant. Susan Luminallo is going to give you a little bit of background.
Thank you. So I want to thank you all who attended our meet and greet event as well, and I, I hope you got some good information from that. I'm just going to go over briefly, a little bit background on the grant. So on the Public Health Excellence Grant, in August of 2016, the Special Commission on Local and Regional Public Health was created by a legislative resolve by Governor Charles Baker. The commission was a twenty-five member body charged to assess the effectiveness and efficiency of regional public health systems and to make recommendations on how to strengthen and deliver public health services and preventative measures. In June 2019, this commission completed the Blueprint for Public Health Excellence Report. It outlines recommendations to improve efficiency and effectiveness. In April 2020, the State Action for Public Health Excellence Act was passed, creating the Public Health Excellence Grant Program. In January 2020, Mass DPH launched the Massachusetts Municipal Public Health Shared Services Grant Program. On July first of 2022, the Triton Collaborative, including the municipalities of Burlington, Wilmington, and Lexington, was awarded the Public Health Excellence Grant of thirty thousand per year for three years.
Three hundred thousand.
Three hundred thousand. Burlington serves as the lead agency of the grant and is responsible for grant management and receives fifteen percent of the grant award, which is the forty-five thousand dollars per year. Okay, John? So as Dr. Weiner said, we're here to talk about the intermunicipal agreement and the Blueprint for Public Health Excellence Recommendations. So the, the agreement will assist Burlington with meeting the recommendations to improve our public health capacity. Some of these recommendations from the report include to increase cross-jurisdictional sharing of public health services. One requirement of the agreement is to form an advisory board with three representatives from all three municipalities. Decisions will be made about policies, personnel, and finances at the advisory board level, and individual boards of health will keep the same statutory authority. In addition, DPH holds regular meetings for public health excellence grantees to share information. The second recommendation was to acquire, store, and use data to improve population public health. We're going to enhance public health capacity through the storage and acquiring of data. The grant is going to fund several part-time positions, including a public health nurse, a health inspector, an epidemiologist, and a community health outreach worker. A priority is going to be placed on collecting data and using and interpreting that data to target specific programs to improve health outcomes of our residents. We're going to make training available and accessible to all local public health departments. That's what DPH is planning on doing through this grant. There's going to be a wide range of services provide, that we provide and regulations that we, we provide a wide range of services, and these require concentrating, concentration of all Board of Health staff. Board of Health staff maintain credentials such as registered sanitarian, certified hazardous materials manager, licensed soil evaluator, and registered nurse. The grant will pay for memberships to professional organizations, attendance at conferences, and grantees will have free access to a regional training hub that is going to be run by Mass Department of Public Health. Most states distribute state funding to local health departments. In Massachusetts, there is no dedicated state funding to local public health. The intent of the grant program is to move toward long-term sustainability. And the town of Burlington has been awarded a master agreement contract, in effect through June thirty of 2038, which enables the town to be a qualified vendor under the RFR. So moving forward with the agreement, we're going to, we're asking you for two things tonight, to appoint the program manager and to sign the agreement. Because Burlington is the lead agency, the town must appoint the Director of Public Health as the program manager. Some responsibilities of the program manager are going to include performing all fiscal administrative functions under the agreement, coordinating between municipalities and Mass Department of Public Health, establishing and maintaining the advisory board, ensuring adequate staffing and managing staff, collaborating with the regional training hub, providing quarterly updates and expense reports and an annual report, attending all DPH required meetings and trainings, and submit a detailed work plan and a strategic plan for moving forward. So the signature required from the Select Board and the Board of Health Chairman is required for the agreement. Right now, the agreement is with Lexington, and Lexington is getting it signed, and as soon as we get it back, we will bring it over to your office for signature.
So we're asking you to appoint a, a program manager, Ms. Luminallo, our Director of Public Health, as well as, I guess formally approve the grant.
Okay. Gentlemen, questions? Joe, you want to start?
Um, Mr. Chairman, I just want to add, the intermunicipal, intermunicipal agreement is similar to what we had done recently with Lexington on the shared water line. So it's, basically spells out all the responsibilities of the three communities. Town Council has reviewed it, so she's fine with everything that's in there at this point, so.
Excellent. Thank you, Paul. Questions, Joe?
Uh, no, I just, I don't see any reason why we wouldn't go forward with this. This is great, thank you so much. It helps the town out immensely. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I was at, I was at the presentation over at Grandview the other day. I, I thought it was absolutely fascinating. One of the, one of the points that kind of sticks out in my mind is that here in Massachusetts, the speaker was saying we've got three hundred and sixty-one separate department, Board of Health, you know, every town has one, yet larger states, California, Texas, for example, address their health in a regional fashion, and so you have like fewer than twenty health agencies serving much, much larger states, much bigger population, and they do it efficiently and effectively. So I, I think this is a, a great idea, was really impressed the other day, and in fact, ever since then, I've been, in my little brain here, thinking how, how else could we, where else in Burlington could we maybe, you know, utilize this concept, you know, taking a regional approach or partnering with some other communities and in some other areas? So I'm, I'm, I'm really excited. I think it's a great program. Hopefully the, the grant, the money we have for two or three years, but if it is, hopefully legislature will continue that, you know, extend that even beyond the current time period, so. But anyhow, yeah, no, I'm, excuse me, I thought it was a great presentation and long overdue.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I also attended with Select Memorial Union, and just to reiterate one point that I, a couple of points, this will have no impact on our current staffing. This is to supplement, to supplement all three towns. So it's not going to impact staffing at all. We're going to get shared services in addition to what we have, which again, it's phenomenal. And one of the slides sticks in my head, and I was amazed to see the difference, how much each town spends per resident on public health. I mean, it varied dramatically. So just, that was kind of an eye-opening slide, but again, this is a fantastic deal for the town of Burlington, Lexington, and Wilmington.
Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I think it's very exciting, and I'm glad we got the grant. Congratulations to you and your team. And I love seeing the collaboration between the communities with Lexington Wilmington. I think that's a wonderful use of shared resources and look forward to seeing all the great things we can do with the grant. I love it. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Absolutely. Yeah, I also had the pleasure of, of attending, and I agree, I was going to say the same thing that Jim said, really, you know, that, that slide of, of not, not just what is spent per resident, but what each town allocates, right? I mean, so Wilmington, Lexington, us, our populations aren't drastically different, but Lexington obviously spends a considerable amount more.
Lexington spends over two million dollars on their Board of Health. We spend seven hundred and ninety thousand, where Wilmington spends about two hundred, a little over two hundred and fifty thousand.
And from Wilmington to Lexington, the spread of residents is, what, ten thousand people?
Population of Burlington is, was listed by the Department of Public Health, is about twenty-five thousand, thirty-four, thirty-five thousand for Lexington and twenty-three thousand for Wilmington.
Yeah. Yeah. So to be able to, to share resources, to be able to, to cross collaborate in the overall environment is a, is a great idea. I'm, I'm very thankful that we can pursue this, and I agree, I think that there are a lot of other areas that, you know, we can sort of look at and say, where else can this be achieved? Because instead of having three hundred and fifty-one municipalities running around, right, you know, we can still do that, but have a higher level, a, a more regional net that can capture, you know, that, that knowledge and that, that shared information, right? And then have some of the dollars to do the, the things that we need to get done, so. Okay, with that, Paul, you are.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's, it's not often that we, I grace with the presence of our Board of Health at a Select Board meeting, so I just wanted to take an opportunity to, to thank them for all the extraordinary work they do here in town. I think you guys are well aware of their tremendous leadership during the pandemic, but the, the fact of the matter is, they've been an exceptional department for many years and will continue to be many years in the future. Some, a department we're very proud of, so I just want to thank them for all their efforts.
Absolutely. All right, let's start with, we'll do a vote for the acceptance of the, of the intermunicipal agreement first, right? Do you want there anything about who has to sign it, or?
Yeah. Is the chair, is the select board, so authorize Nick to sign that, please?
Okay. And then after that, we'll do the, the program manager.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we agree to sign the intermunicipal agreement and have you sign, the chairman has signed for the board.
Okay, motion been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain. Five zero zero. All right, and then if I could get a vote for appointing Susan for the program manager? Lucky you.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to announce Susan Luminallo for the program manager for the intermunicipal program.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain. Five zero zero.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Item fifty, we've got some department budgets. Whitney, come on down.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So as you are all familiar, the, the departments that report to the Select Board come before you each fiscal year to approve their budgets before it goes to Ways and Means and ultimately Town Meeting. So we're kicking it off with a few departments here tonight. I don't see Chris, should we do veterans?
Yes, we'll wait till he becomes a.
Do it in a different order? Okay, uh, let's start with Human Resources then. So in your packet, you have a little summary sheet and then the actual copy of the each department's budget with the backup. For Human Resources, we have a three point one one percent increase overall, and that consists of a level funded salary line and a one point four eight increase in expenses, which is driven by a slight bump in professional development, meeting costs. And then you'll see a thirty-six point six two percent increase in special accounts with these budgets that are, have lower salary components, or I'm sorry, lower expense components versus salary, a small increase, looks like a very, a small increase in dollars looks like a large percent increase. So that's actually just for BMEA education funding that was part of the newly ratified BMEA contract. I think those are the major points, and Joanne is here, if there are any questions.
Gentlemen, while Joanne is here, any questions? Bernie, in your ears. Jim, let's start with you.
I just want to say thank you because I don't have any questions because this is so well laid out. This is phenomenal. I mean, there's no reason to ask questions, I don't think. This is fantastic. It makes it such an easy read. That's all.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Whitney, what are the recommended guidelines for each department this year?
So the overall guideline that we're trying to reach on the operating side is three point seven five.
Okay. Okay, that's all I have for this one. Joanne?
Oh, I can't agree with Jimmy anymore. Thank you.
Maybe a stupid question, what's BMEA stand for?
That is our Municipal Employees Association, one of our unions in town.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Joanne, would you mind just talking to the board about the fact that you're a split department with the schools and just a little bit about how that works? It's, um, it's very unique. Our HR department covers the town and the schools, which is very cost effective, and we always have to sort of check into, with Joanne, just to make sure that that still works for us, because we're, we're a pretty large place, and if you go to most communities, they have a separate HR department for the town and the schools, so. Do you want to just talk a little bit about that, Joanne, and is the formula still working for us?
It still works. Yes. So my portion of the salary line item is funded jointly by the town budget and the school budget, so it's about a sixty forty split. I do spend some time at the school department, a couple of days a week, and the rest of my time is spent here at Town Hall, but I bounce around whenever I'm needed, so, you know, you can always reach me no matter what. And I believe that everyone in town, school folks included, all receive a Town of Burlington paycheck, so we're all one group. It makes a lot of sense for us all to be, you know, working on the same team and, you know, coordinated in that respect. So I think it's, it's a great setup. It makes a lot of sense. I enjoy seeing, you know, different faces throughout the week. It's, it's wonderful. And I've got some great people at work with me, and both here in Town Hall and over at the schools, and things, things are going very nicely.
Awesome. Thank you, Joanne. All right, gents. Oh, do you want to do two more together at the end?
Oh, whatever your preference is.
Mr. Chairman, just for the record, I will have to abstain from Disabilities Access. My brother's the chairman.
Right. Let's just do them as we go. So if someone wants to make a motion to approve this, we'll just take them as, as we run.
Make a motion to approve item, budget number one fifty-two, Human Resources, as presented.
Second.
Okay, motion been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain. Five zero zero. All right. Joanne, next one for you to come down.
She's not leaving yet. So next, we're going to go to the sealer of weights and measures. So historically, as you all might remember, we've had, the state has sort of functioned as our sealer, and we've had a contract with them, and this budget has funded part of that contract cost, but the state has informed us that they will no longer be performing that service, so to fill that gap, we have partnered with the town of Lexington to hire a sealer, and we will be paying sixty percent of that person's salary in Lexington and the cost expenses, and Lexington will be picking up forty percent of that. So it's, it's a pretty big change from last year, which is why you'll see the hundred and sixteen percent increase, because again, a small budget, seven thousand eight hundred dollars to sixteen thousand something. And we're all here to answer any questions if there are any.
Yeah, and just so the board knows, the fees that are collected for sealing the devices go into a revolving fund and then are invested back into this program also. So it's not just this part of the budget, this is the part that we're funding out of the operating budget.
Paul, remind me again, the state just, the state dumped us or they dumped everybody? I can't remember.
They do, they're required to do, I believe, all the sealing in any communities with population five thousand or less. There was a period of time fifteen years ago when they had capacity and they were recruiting cities and towns, larger ones, including the town of Burlington, so a bunch of communities jumped on board to have the state do the sealing, and I'm not exactly sure what happened at the state level, but they made a decision about a year ago that they would no longer be servicing the cities and towns that they actively recruited, you know, a while ago. So quite frankly, they left us a little bit in the lurch on that, but we're able to, through Joanne's efforts, work with our neighboring communities, and we're able to sort of sync up with Lexington as a, a good partner for us to sort of share the costs associated with this service. And, you know, this is, this is the best guess of our first time through the budget, so this is a new way of doing things. We used to have a flat contract with the state, so we believe that this is a good way. We got a person with some really good experience into the position. It's a part-time position, so it hasn't come before the board, it won't need to come before the board, but like I say, this is our best guess at what this, what this might cost us for this year, so.
Gentlemen, any questions?
Just another comment, that this is another great intermunicipal thing that Mike talked about.
It, it's part-time position, so with no benefits involved with, with this, right?
Correct. All right, Joanne?
That's correct. I think between the two communities, it's still going to be under twenty hours a week.
Okay, thank you. Paul, you mentioned the, the revolving account that's going to help kind of go back to fund this. Any sense of like, how much it's going to fund itself? I guess is the question.
So, Mr. Chairman, the, the operating budget, that number that we're projecting for next year is just our portion of the salary, and then the revolving account has about twenty thousand dollars in it, that's allowed to be carried over from year to year, and we think that should be sufficient to fund any equipment or mileage reimbursement or any other costs that we're going to have associated with this. But it should be plenty, but we'll go through a year and figure it out, and if it's, if the other costs are, if the other costs are lower than that, then maybe next year we don't need to fund the operating budget as much, but.
Okay. Very good. All right, gentlemen, if there are no other questions, take a motion.
Make a motion to approve the budget for the sealer of weights and measures as presented.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain. Five zero zero.
Can we move on to MI? Can we move on to MIS? So for MIS, you'll see an overall 2.07 increase. That consists of a 1.05 increase in salaries, which is driven by contractual rates, and a 3.19 increase in expenses, which is driven by various costs, such as, you know, our Munis service and other programs that we have that just have certain costs that go up over time. That's pretty much it in a nutshell, and Jose is here to answer any questions that you might have.
Gentlemen, any questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
I just want to think to point out, it's on your summary sheet too, but one of the costs that we're paying, but we're using Opera funds to do it, is the cost for WebEx. It's about just under $11,000 a year, so if that's something that's gonna continue into the future, you'll see that as an increase next year, so we just kind of put a little heads up on the cover sheet for that. It's not in the budget this year because we're using other funds to do it.
Okay. My one question is, the part-time backfill hours for cybersecurity, is that winding up being overtime hours for current staff? How are we?
So, at this time, we're not using those funds yet. We're doing the, from the January meeting, cybersecurity assessments for the department heads, for all the departments, and we're gonna get a better feel for how we can utilize that $25,000. Original plan was to use it for a time employee, but after the assessments, we may have a better idea of how we should use those funds.
Okay, great. Thank you, John. All right, gentlemen, any other questions? Anything else? No? Okay. Then I'll launch a motion.
Chairman, a motion to approve the MIS budget as presented.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain. Five zero zero. Gentlemen, thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's see what it is.
Next, can we do Treasurer?
Can we do the other ones?
Yeah, I was gonna say.
First? Save this one for the end.
Go first early.
All right, Gary, don't sit back down.
Come on, Whitney.
Okay, so for Treasurer Collector, we have a 3.66% increase overall that consists of a 3.57% increase in salary, which again is driven by contractual obligations as well as the shift in structure that Gary talked about a little bit earlier that is FTE neutral, but some reorganization of who's who and what their titles are. And then on the expense side, we have a 5.69% increase, which is driven largely by an increase in contracted services for various consulting needs, and the special accounts are level-funded. And Gary is here to answer any questions.
Gentlemen, questions? Bless you, Jim.
Thank you. I guess I'm, I'm seeing zero increase in materials and supplies. I find that difficult to believe. Are we using the paper and stuff? Automating, automating into people paying their bills online and stuff like that? I mean, are those things making a difference?
The costs have increased a bit, but we, some of it is in central admin, some of those costs for the paper, so what we're using, we're doing more and more internally within the department, using the computers, so we're making less copies, storing everything, so we've decreased that usage tremendously the last year or two.
Okay, well, just kind of nice to see because we all know everything cost is more expensive the last couple of years, but okay, just curious about that one.
Mr. Chairman, that's, Ms. Randy, that's one of the things we struggle with with all the budgets, that people have the same amount of, you know, money to buy materials and supplies, so as we call it, stuff. They just get a little less stuff and they may do with less. So it is, you know, we've been kicking that can down the road for a while, and most of our departments are able to do it for another year, so it'll last forever.
Stay tuned, right?
We'll be here at some point saying we gotta.
Need more stuff.
Need more post.
Yeah.
We're also hoping with the upgraded Munis system, we'll finally be able to get on to the employee self-service, which would then eliminate the remittances we're issuing each week for employees who are on direct deposit. They'll be able to go online and see it for themselves, so we're trying to initiate different programs.
Other questions, gentlemen? Yeah, could you just, I know since you're becoming Treasurer Collector, you've done a lot of work looking at the structure of that office. Could you just take a minute and talk about what you've done and, you know, how it's all coming together with this most recent adjustment?
With the, thank you, Mr. Chairman, with the changes in the makeup of the department, we will now have myself as the Treasurer Collector, the approval this evening, Ana Maria De Rosa is the Deputy Treasurer Collector. On the Treasury side, we have an Assistant Treasurer, the existing, Ari O'Shea, and then we have Dash Narana as an Accounting Specialist. In the past, that used to be admin. We've made that more of an accounting position. On the Collector's side, we eliminated the position of Assistant Collector and replaced that with the Senior Collector, so the Senior Collector will report to the Deputy Treasurer Collector. Then we have a Collector Specialist, who is an existing employee, part of the Command, and then we have an Admin Position One, which is Jane Etheridge, and we continue to have our, so the change was versus, in the past, we went from the Treasurer Collector to an Assistant Treasurer, Assistant Collector. Now we have a bona fide Number Two in the department, so as that, as Ana continues to train, we'll be looking to probably move, move ahead from a succession plan, set the structure up accordingly for that, and we have our Benefits Administrator and the Payroll Administrator, who are now working together, and the Senior Collector will be the backup in payroll. So now we have a bona fide backup, which we've been trying to do. We've had a few people doing it in the last year, year and a half because of changes within the role, but we think we've now had that, will strengthen that position. I have a backup. Maria De Rosy does a fabulous job.
Awesome process. Excellent, thank you. Paul, Joe, anything you want to add?
Uh, no, sir.
Good, okay. All right, gentlemen, I'll launch a motion.
Motion to approve the budget for the Treasurer Collector as presented.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain. Five zero zero. Gary, thanks so much.
Thank you. Thank you, Gary.
Okay.
Next, we can talk about Legal, which is a pretty easy one because it is level-funded for FY24. As you may remember, this covers our general legal services for the town, special collective bargaining, cable negotiations, and tax title legal services.
Gentlemen, any questions? Have I never asked what cable TV negotiations means?
That would be, Mr. Chairman, when we negotiate the contracts with Verizon, Comcast, they typically, 10-year agreements, Whitney?
Yeah, so we have license agreements with each of the three major operators, Verizon, Comcast, and RCN to operate in town, and as Paul said, those are usually 10- or 20-year agreements that we have to renegotiate, and basically, a lot of it, it turns on the peg funding, cable access funding, that we turn around and designate to be cast.
It's pretty dry and specialized, as Whitney can attest to.
It's not my favorite subject, but it's very important, but it's something that we have to do basically on a stagger three times every 10 years or so, so it comes up as it comes up.
All right. If there's nothing else, I'll launch a motion.
Make a motion to approve the budget for Legal for FY24 as presented.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain. Five zero zero.
Okay, next, we have Central Administration. This is just the operating piece of Central Administration. There are a number of accommodated accounts in that budget that you'll be seeing coming for you in the days and weeks ahead, but just to get the easy ones out of the way, we're talking about the central machine and central supply budgets. So there's a tiny increase in the central machine budget, which is the copy machines and the like, so just the lease agreements that we have there and the supplies and services related to that. And then central supply, as was referenced earlier in Gary's budget, that's where we buy a lot of our typical office supplies that are generic to all departments, not specialized, and we've been making do with level funding that for several years now.
Gentlemen, any questions? All right, if there's anything else, I'll launch a motion.
Chairman, motion to approve Central Admin Budget as presented.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain. Five zero zero.
Well, just, Mr. Chairman, we'll probably just move veterans and disability to a time when Chris comes so he can have a chance to speak to you about that.
Yeah.
We gotta come back four more times anyways.
Yeah, but a problem. Four more times?
Well, we're only gonna do a couple like that.
All right. So many. Jimmy, when do you, when do you begin to sit down with Ways and Means, Paul?
This upcoming Wednesday, yeah. Starts the process, I should say.
Thank you.
Thanks, Whitney.
All right, let's go ahead and move to next, 51, Call-In Center. Here we have Morgan and Karen from Call-In Center here joining us. Hi, Morgan, I see you there.
Hi, good evening.
So the Call-In Center, for those of you who haven't been tuning in, has been helping us to conduct a communications assessment, and they are here to speak to us about Phase One of the process, which is wrapped up, and where we're headed with Phase Two. So Morgan, I'm gonna hand you the proverbial floor, and I'll let you take it away.
Great, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. I will attempt to share my screen. Hold on one second so I can, and I understand that you have the PowerPoint in your packet. Can everyone see this?
Yes.
Great. So as indicated, we are going over the findings from Phase One, which was the communications assessment, and I'm sorry, I did plan to meet with you all in person, but due to this evening's snow, thought the better of it. And our project team coordinator, Karen, is also on a select board, so her meeting started, so she had to log off, so apologies. So the assessment parameters is we looked at the town's demographics, the different populations, how those populations get information. We looked at which departments do communications themselves, who those departments are trying to reach, what communication tools are used, and how effective those tools are. And I'll just go over a brief overview of our findings. We found that communications are generally siloed within each department that does communications. Departments all have websites, some have social media, some have newsletters, but each varies widely on the use of each tool, and that there are no centralized communication policies or practices employed, which I should mention is pretty standard. So we're coming into this knowing that municipal communications is kind of a new field, things are changing really rapidly in communications, you know, internationally and nationally, especially in government and local government, so please know that our findings are not specific to Burlington. We have a few different recommendations. First is that the town prioritize professional communication. That could, and we suggest it should mean creating a communications position or department, and empowering that professional to oversee townwide policies and strategies, and that position or department would hopefully ensure that departments work with that team and use approved policies and strategies as they go forward with their individual departmental We also recommend that the town develop a communication strategy, protocols, and coherent branding identity. Well, one way to start that would be to use what we're developing in Phase Two, which we'll talk about more later on, as a launching point for the internal communication team, employ a deep community knowledge to tailor a coherent town strategy, and provide each department with the tools to effectively reach the residents they're trying to reach. Another recommendation is to update the town website. We found in our assessment of the website that it does have a lot of text-heavy content. I know that you use the Civic Plus platform, so that does have some flexibility built into it, though you might need to update, I'm not sure, but you can definitely incorporate more pictures, videos, or hiddenness, depending on whether you have someone in the communications position to produce them, but infographics and pictures are definitely a great way to get communication across without putting it all in text, and it is required to have a privacy policy, and this is something we've found doing other assessments, even with Civic Plus being the go-to template for municipal websites, they still don't seem to include a privacy policy for the municipalities, which is unfortunate. Another recommendation is to ensure that content is accessible. That means incorporating communication strategies to reach non-English speech speakers, visually impaired, and other underserved groups, creating and reviewing content with the new communications team, creating plain language policies, and making sure staff who do communications are trained in plain language and the policies. And for big communications efforts, large-scale ones, you might want to consider focus groups or other two-way tools for large-scale efforts. One of the recent interviews for Phase Two that I was involved in talked about having, you know, ward meetings for your town, your town meeting wards. I think that's what they're called, I'm sorry, from a small town where we don't have representative town meetings, but, you know, individually, like having conversations in places for people to engage, that too is a communication strategy. But basically, as you know, when large-scale efforts are on the table, the more, the better as far as outreach and giving people the opportunity to be heard and to hear from you and add their questions and answers. So we also recommend that strategy for large-scale efforts. We know that that's not feasible for every little launch. Also, we recommend streamlining your social media and other accounts and incorporating metrics. There are a lot of departmental accounts on social media, the full report has more information on that, and you want to make sure that you're using social media effectively and optimizing using key performance indicator data, and then measuring your goal and objective success using the key performance indicator data. So the next steps for Phase Two, as I indicated, we are doing interviews right now with the department heads and some of the select board, and you're all welcome to participate, so do let us know if you, if you haven't been scheduled yet and you want to be. These interviews are to get more detail on the communication strategies and efforts that each department does. Then we'll be doing community research from March to May, and that's gonna be trying to hear particularly from the folks that we're hearing in the department head interviews that you feel like are underserved, or you feel like the messages aren't getting to, so we want to particularly try to focus on hearing from them and how they want to be communicated with. We'll be drafting the plan in May and June, and we expect to give you the draft and final plan before the closeout of the fiscal year in June. As I indicated, I'm the project manager. Here's my email, and Karen Canfield is our project associate, and her email's on here as well. Thanks.
Excellent. Thank you, Morgan. Questions, comments, gentlemen, anything?
I kind of liked the privacy policy. I think that's probably a good idea. I didn't realize we did not have one on our website. I know I'm doing, I have an, I have an appointment this Friday, actually, an interview with Karen, I believe. I don't know if any of you. I don't know if any of you, anyone else has done, Mike, have you done a party? Yeah, pretty painless?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, I'll be there Friday, and so I'll probably learn a little bit more on Friday.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Morgan, are you aware of any towns that do have a communication policy that you think is excellent that we can look at?
A policy?
Or a communications plan.
We have started compiling some resources as part of this. This is a pretty new practice area for the Call-In Center, and it's a pretty new area for Massachusetts local government. As you were discussing earlier in your Board of Health conversation, you know, there's 351 different answers across the state for all of the problems that you come across. So we've, I hesitate to tell you which, because I know, I remember there was one, one in Massachusetts that we referenced in a, for another client. We're always on the lookout for more, and we will include references in the Phase Two report. But off the top of my head, I'm blanking on which, but like I said, it's a, it's a new area in Massachusetts local government. I missed the MMA conference, I don't know if any of you were there, but they did have a presentation where I believe two municipalities in the state have like dedicated, or not only two, but these particular two were presenting on how they run communications for their municipality. But like I said, it's a burgeoning field, and we're still researching. So we'll have more options for you with links to good plans in the, in the Phase Two product.
All right, thank you also, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, Jim. Mike, Joe, anything? Thank you. All right. Yeah, Morgan, thank you for taking us through, you know, where we've been to date and where we're going. I'm very much looking forward to the output from everything in Phase Two. I think that this is actually a really good time for us to get, to start to figure out like what some of these recommendations mean for us, right? Because as we talk to the various directors, as we talk to them, you know, our own opinions, experiences, everything that we're moving through is gonna, is gonna affect, you know, something like, you know, creating a single channel, right, for something, right? It's like, well, the police department might not want that, right? We need to make sure we can have those conversations, so. Awesome. Thank you for coming in. Karen, I see you still on the line, so thank you as well for being here. And we look forward to keeping working with you.
Thank you so much. We look forward to the rest of the project, and we'll be back in front of you to present the second findings as well.
Awesome, thank you.
Good night, everyone.
You too.
You too.
All right, item fifty-two, discussion government, we actually have to postpone this, which takes us to item fifty-three, town anniversary discussion. So I figured now's as good a time as any to get this conversation kicked off. We had a lot on our proverbial plates coming out of twenty-two into twenty-three. I went a-diggin' and found everything that the, the committee from our two-hundredth did. And boy, was it a lot of work, done by a lot of people. And I know we have some folks in the room tonight, Mrs. Fay, Mr. Hagden, Mrs. Nolte, thank you for being here tonight. If at any point you want to come up and say anything, please feel free to do so as we're chattering on. I think the conversation we had last time was centered around the biggest concern that members of this board had expressed, which was lack of bodies, right? I think it's just, you know, it's hard to get enough people to put something like this together. So before I go on a spiel about, you know, a proposal that I had been thinking about in terms of how we might want to tackle this in an effective manner, I want to open up a discussion of thoughts and, you know, anything that's in people's minds, anything from you folks you might have, we can talk it through for a few minutes and see if we can't get a kicking-off point. So to the board first, is there anything in the back of your heads that when you think of this, you, you see a way forward, you see any potential roadblocks, anything that we want to talk through from the jump? Jim?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you said, we have less people involved. This just popped off the top of my head is how can we, can we see if the schools have history classes or something that they want to assist with as far as getting more bodies, so to speak, to help planning this? So maybe they can incorporate some sort of project or make it a project to work with our team and come up with something, you know, add more resources to the team.
Student projects, I like it. Anything else? Mike?
Actually, yeah, I was at the, at the last historical commission meeting, and they had a young boy scout there who was considering whether or not to do something as an Eagle Scout project with historical study. So I think that's, hopefully, they, hopefully they return and maybe you can get the whole troop to pitch in and, and get them interested in celebrating our upcoming anniversary. The other thing, Wayne, we talked about, you said a proclamation from this board would be helpful to the commission and...
Usually in the, in the past, I mean, we're talking my three involvements with townwide events. You guys end up setting policies for anything and everything. So by making a proclamation stating that the town of Burlington will be 225 years in 2024, that sets the stage for anything and everything to fall back to, to lead into that, you know, and we don't have the time to get the volunteers, we know we're not gonna get the volunteers. So because of COVID, that's put us, because when we did the two-hundredth, that was a five-year planning process. And I just asked Joyce if she remembered how many years it was for the hundred-and-seventy-fifth. And it's a case of, the whole town has now moved into a different stage of its life. Things that have, you know, made the biggest difference, as we all agree, it's been the automobile and the conception of highways and everything else. But we've got individuals, from the standpoint of Melissa's office, that never existed before. Whether we could work with her, she's got a fantastic site on Bring Me to Burlington, I went on it, and the history, she's got listed in there already. Because like I said, between what we get put together for our two-hundred-and-twenty-fifth is gonna lead into USA two-fifty, because they'll start to celebrate April nineteenth in 2025, followed by USA two-fifty for July fourth. So it's like a three-year of a barrage of historical issues coming up.
See, all towns are gonna do this, not just us. It's not something we thought of, or it's something that, you know, we've been told by Mass Historical Commission, and all towns are doing it.
You mean for two, 2026?
For not right now, 2024. I'm concentrating on 2024 and not 26 yet.
Right. No.
That's the contrary. Just now for us, and we have to have a proclamation in order to start anything. Like, we decided to put banners around town. A woman just had theirs, I think it's three-hundred and something, and I kind of was watching what they did too.
All right, can you, can you give me a draft of a proclamation of what you think?
We, we don't, well, there's many drafts, I think, there online. Maybe, maybe Dan has something down in the archives from before that he can dig up, but what we have...
No, I think what Mike means is what do we want to do?
Yeah, you know, what, you, you know, what we did twenty-five years ago may not be germane for what you think in for 2025 here. So I'm just, I'm just, give, give us...
I, I understand.
Tell me what you want, and I'm sure we can be happy to, we'd be happy to put something together for you that, at least to get things started.
It's a very, it's a very simplistic proclamation, because if you leave it...
Give it to me.
But the, no, the only thing we have is a request from the commission to the selectmen that you, you, you make up, you know, you declare a proclamation for this event. All right, now, Mary went online and she found the, the directions on how to do a proclamation. You do this, whereas that, and all the rest of the whereases that go with it. Now, maybe Lisa could find that. I always call her Lisa.
Everything is whereas, whereas, is that what you want from that?
Yes, well, what do you want to, which, is there anything specific other than just a generic proclamation that Lynn can probably find for us?
You could make it just one day, you could make it a week, you could make it a month, you could make it a year.
Sure.
By doing a year, you now allow all of your different entities that make up the government of the town, whether it be you guys, Board of Health, Conservation, Recreation, to do whatever they want. And we're trying to get the lead on it, because as you know, our incorporation date falls in the middle of a fiscal year. So that puts it at a, at a disadvantage, because now you've got to have that other six months ahead of time. And I know it's getting budget time with Ways and Means. So that's why we've been trying to, you know, get it in print, so that if now we can go back to the different organizations, and, you know, the Recreation Department had picked up a lot of the things we did for the two-hundredth and expanded on it. I mean, you know, we, we broke a lot of ground that, that particular year. And we're not gonna be able to do that. So we can rely on the business community, whether it be, what is it, BACC? Maybe they want to be involved in it, maybe they would like to come up with an idea to sponsor a parade, who knows what? But it's, you know, it's still, it's gonna be a real tight timeframe to get anything done, because, you know, it's, it is what it is. And I mean, we do have ties to the national part of it, too. I'll just drop the infamous salmon dinner and let everybody go home and do the homework and find out what the salmon dinner is, you know, that kind of thing, to give you an idea that we do have a tie to the national level. So that's why I say if we can get a generic proclamation from the Board of Selectmen, that sets the stage for everybody and anybody. And if we can work with Melissa, and if we can work with Sonia, you know, because I know, I think she's running, you know, the chair on that right now, based on what I see on cable, good old B-Cat comes to the rescue, you know? So that's what we're trying to do, is to help you guys get a handle on what we can expect, which isn't gonna be a marvelous thing. It may probably be one parade, maybe even if somebody wants to buy fireworks one a month for the whole year. But do them somewhere or other behind the center school. Do them, say, down on the minor field, or do them in the northwest, you know, anywhere else, just to change the routine, to make it different. And then the other neighbors on the other side of town will be complaining that, who's shooting fireworks, and, you know, because they're always blaming women instead of us, or once in a while less.
You set your sight pretty high, Wayne.
Well, it's like anything, you start at the top and then negotiate so it's compatible with everybody.
Okay, so tomorrow is anniversary.
Which was, my original intention was to come by and say happy birthday Burlington tomorrow. And then I saw on your agenda there was gonna be a discussion, I said, well, I'm not gonna let that go by.
So you want us to name a year?
I think a year, I think a year would be good, because...
Can we agree on that?
Yeah.
The year 2024 is proclaimed 2024.
Burlington two-twenty-five. And the only reason I'm putting it that way is because the feds have already come out with USA two-fifty.
Sure.
So it's, it's, you know, in line with what's the thought process now. Everything's short and sweet, you know?
It's all gonna get confusing, because it's all gonna roll into one event.
We're gonna want to party it, I think, right?
But the thought, the thoughts that the Historical Commission have, have for their part, and it was, one of the things was that we would try to get that trolley, the trolley car that we had before, and maybe could take people to the sites, the historical sites that are on the Heritage Trail or just even in the center of town. So it would be the, you know, the grand view and the, the museum and burial ground, and then over to the West School, Francis Wyman House, and, and kind of make a loop. So that was our thought. There were other thoughts, too, that we haven't really fully discussed, so. But if other groups get together with their, there would, I would think there would have to be some sort of a committee to get together to, to find out what everybody was doing.
I think first is to start the excitement about it.
Yeah.
It is here, it is coming next year. And this is just a basic thing that Joyce did today. It says the Burlington Historical Commission requests the Board of Selectmen to issue a proclamation declaring that the town of Burlington celebrates the two-hundred-and-twenty-fifth anniversary of Burlington in the year two-oh-two-four.
I don't know if you need a copy of that?
There's an extra copy available for you.
So moved.
Did you sign that?
She can sign it as chairman of the Historical Commission, and then another chairman from another position could sign it as a proclamation for the town.
I feel like I'm being called out. No, I, look, I'm wholly on board with, with the idea, the idea of promoting it, right? What I've been thinking about is trying to make sure that there's consistency in the message for the year, right? So because we're not gonna have a committee this size, sure, we can pull together a committee that's a subcommittee of this board and, you know, have a couple members from, from the commission and, you know, work together, collaborate, it's fine, I'm not worried about that. I'm more concerned about like identifying the current list of events that we have on, on the year, right? So Burlington Day, Truck Day, whatever it is, right? And putting a package together that we can give to each, right? Give it to REC, give it to the folks who run Truck Day, and say, please use this as your theme for this year, right?
Okay, that's a good idea.
And as a part of that, it's a proclamation and any other required, let's just call it media, right? It's a whole little kit. And we could, you know, maybe have the high school kids, you know, compete to put something together for us, I don't know, we can figure that out. And then we identify one or two, maybe other events throughout the year that we want to do, that are completely standalone two-two-five, right? Because I think that that's probably all the energy and time that we're gonna have to put into it. And that way we can focus it on, maybe it's the trolley thing, right? And, you know, that could be a Saturday thing, and people can come and be an awesome experience for families and, you know, anyone who wants to, to learn more about the history of Burlington, that sounds really neat. But if we can weave the theme into things that already exist, the workload decreases dramatically. But the appearance and the conversation can still be elevated to that whole thing, right? I love Jim's idea of getting student involvement, whether it's PTO or classroom engagement.
See, people aren't coming to us, so now we need to go to them.
Right.
But can I make a quick suggestion?
Yeah, yeah.
Wayne, if you're looking to get the ball rolling and promote, get this promoted, Wayne, this is Sydney, Sydney, this is Wayne.
She has been typing like a mad person over there ever since we sat here. I, I realize she's new on the, new kid on the block, and I figure we'll be talking to her at some point in time, real quick.
Also, just as a follow-up.
Where's Sydney? Hi.
Just as a follow-up, where she is new, maybe collaborating with her, she can learn the town through you guys.
Yeah, I have no problem. I've been told that I can talk a cat off a fish wagon.
So I would think the B-Cat would be a good place to start.
So I mean, I know Mike would enjoy having participation for a Fourth of July parade, and especially if we had, you know, money that was putting into the floats or anything else, along with the local organizations, whether it's the PTOs, the Girl Scouts, the Boy Scouts, and all the rest of the stuff. Because, you know, unfortunately, we've lost a lot of participation for volunteers in other organizations, other than just town events.
Yeah, Mike.
Mr. Chairman, one, one thing we may want to think about, now this has got me thinking, because we're talking about using the high school kids, is maybe designing a logo for Burlington two-twenty-five. That way we get, we put that on the shirts for Celebrate Burlington, we can put it on the shirts for all the events all across town, just to keep that in the awareness, just a singular, you know, logo for the whole year, Burlington two-twenty-five, and you can put it on the shirts for whatever event that we have.
And, and the one we had for the two-hundredth was made by a local graduate, Robert Swift. He designed it. We put out a contest that particular year. So whether we go right back to the art department or the school department, but once you guys make the determination, starting as of a year from now, we can still go to the school committee and say, okay, the town has determined that they would like to celebrate 225 years in 2024. Now we've got some ammunition or whatever you want to call it, credibility, so we can say to them, we would like to talk to your history department to see if we can expand on local history, because I believe, if I can be proven wrong, that MCAS is now looking at changing its requirements for graduation to include social studies? Did I hear something that on BZ one day on the radio?
I don't know. I don't know.
Because they're finding out there's a lot of lack of knowledge on civics, you know, and we're talking.
Just, just as another thought, in addition to Melissa, Rick Parker has, is a conduit to all the businesses in town. I'm sure you can get businesses to, if you put their name on a T-shirt or something. We have businesses, businesses in this town that support us year-round. And I'm sure, I know some of the businesses would love to be part of this.
I've already talked to the owner of Maiden Burlington. Would she be receptive to having something that was made in commemoration of the anniversary, whether it's a commemorative coin, whether it's a patch, decal, whatever. And she was willing to talk to us about it.
Okay, great.
Because that didn't even exist ten years ago, you know.
Yeah. Yeah, the access to, to making things is a lot more democratized. Okay. So what makes sense in terms of next steps? Do we want to form a subcommittee now? Do we want to talk about it and bring it in the next meeting? I know we'll probably have to decide on like, you know, warrant article or articles to town meeting if we need any additional funding for some stuff.
I think that we did this in June. We, we were here.
We were here last June and...
He said, we'll, we'll, we'll talk about it. But you're, you're so busy that this, I think if there's just a proclamation declared and that we'd be able to say, we could always let you or your secretaries know what we're doing. But we could say, if in the newspaper it said Burlington has declared this day, day of celebration, this year, a year of celebration, then, then next year.
So, Mary, is the...
It's going to be next year.
Is the, is the assumption then that the Historical Commission is going to run this whole thing? Like, do you, are you, do you want to point on this?
We're not supposed to. There's no...
Okay. So then, then us handing you a proclamation is only like a piece of it.
That's right. That's right. And that's why we came tonight to, just to, to pride.
Help alleviate some of the misconceptions.
And I appreciate you coming.
That's what you get for putting it on your agenda.
I'll never learn. No, I, so...
I understand what you mean though, by tying it in with the other events. That's good. I understand. That's a good...
So my question then to the board is, you know, or I guess, you know, a suggestion is think on the, the facets of, of people that we need to bring together. And, you know, we can pull together a subcommittee at our next meeting. Because I think that, you know, in conjunction with the Historical Commission, we're going to help lead the charge on this. And, you know, we can absolutely get a proclamation. That's the least of my worries. I think there's a lot of outreach that needs to happen to get people into the fold on this. Do that and, and then it just becomes a standing thing for the next year.
Right.
Right? So, I mean, you know, it'll be, I think it'll be tough.
Starting a year from now. We don't want to get everybody confused.
We'll, we'll start working now, though.
It's such a fast-paced society. You still need that lead time.
Right, right. All right. Any, any other suggestions or thoughts on that, John? Okay. So then that's what we'll do. We'll, we'll continue this to our next meeting, at which point we'll, we'll pull together a committee of, and I, please like email me your, your suggestions and anyone, you know, you think might be involved, email me suggestions. And we'll pull something together and we'll get the ball rolling on this. So like a plan?
Mr. Chairman, you think we should create a committee for, to, to run this? Because we don't know. We're going to need someone to kind of be in charge of the whole celebration or at least oversee it.
Well, so I, congratulations.
Isn't that the junior position always gets?
Second. I got it. So geez. Got a second. You're all set. Thank you, Mike. Appreciate your time. If the extent of the, of the committee or subcommittee is organized to pull people together and do like a, a kit with a logo and stuff in it, then it could be a subcommittee of this board. Because we're really going to empower everybody else to kind of lift up and do their, their incorporation of it into the workflow for 2024, right? However, to that question, I think that we should re-ask it again in March at our next meeting, just to make sure that we, we think that, that that still flies and that we don't need to have a whole separate committee for it. But I feel like we could probably just empower our subcommittee to get the work done. That's just my two cents now, thinking at it. Okay. That was a discussion. So we don't have to vote on anything. Thank you all for coming in tonight.
Can I ask who sets up Melissa's schedule? So who do we call?
That would be Melissa.
Call Melissa.
Call her directly? Okay.
Call her directly, yeah.
Okay. Just so we can, you know.
If you want to know our schedule, ask Lynn. Yes. All right.
So before we go, this is not just something that you can say, make the proclamation. I, I was online and you can just get the form on your town. So I was looking at the town website and I got how to write one and all that.
I mean, Mary, are, are you asking for us to tell Lynn to write a proclamation? Because I think that the, the key takeaway here is start a proclamation. If there's any additional language that you want involved in that, I would email her and then she'll pass it around and what's in a good states for us to look at.
I have a feeling she'll have something available next month.
Susan, Susan does a fantastic job. We put her in all the proclamations that have been done since she started a year ago. She will have a proclamation via March thirteenth meeting.
Are you the she?
No, I am not. It will be, it will be given out and she will do a wonderful job.
That's delegation and it's fine.
Absolutely.
I mean, we dropped the bomb on you a few months ago, but I figured once you put it on the agenda, you opened it up.
Absolutely. Yeah. No, I, I appreciate everyone coming.
So at least you ended the, the night on a happy note.
Yeah, absolutely. It's a, it's a great way to end a meeting.
We're going to walk in the hall and we're going to say, what happened?
Well, I mean, I, I hope we're all clear on, on takeaways, right?
Are you going to write a proclamation?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Okay, I'm going.
Okay.
The answer is yes.
Does she want writing? I can put it for writing, Mary.
We, we got it.
I know, I know. I'm just playing.
We proclaim we'll have a proclamation next meeting.
So when, when then, when he does the final gathering close, I'm going to want to talk to you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the time.
Absolutely. All right. Subcommittee reports. Joe?
Nothing.
Mike?
You know, I've been meaning to, I just wanted to point out the, the work over at Simons Park Tennis Courts. You know, I've been a lifelong Burlington resident here. And that has always been a popular spot. There's always kids over there shooting baskets since I was, you know, so they, they, they just redid the whole courts during my, my basketball playing career, which was very brief. But anyhow, I just, I just wanted to point out that they did a, they did a nice job over there. It looks good. And the kids are back out there as they, as they always are. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Absolutely. Jim?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One of my subcommittees is Middlesex Three. I just want to explain what it is and just let the public know that this group, this association can help in so many different ways. So Middlesex Three is a private-public partnership that focuses on workforce, work, workforce development and transportation needs for our region. For example, in the month of March, these are some of the webinars that they're having online. Some are free, some there's a small cross to it. They have webinars on workforce and transportation to include carpooling, shuttle services, and emergency rides home, a manufacturing apprenticeship, apprenticeship program, alternative transportations to get to work, rethinking redevelopment, networking, plus several other public forums on their website. So they're good, they're from, great, it's great for residents, people looking for jobs, people looking for employees. So I encourage people to visit the Middlesex Three website and a whole host of information there.
Thank you, Jim. Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No, Wayne reminded me. I just want to wish Burlington a happy two-hundred-and-twenty-fourth birthday. She doesn't look a day over one-seventy-eight, but happy birthday Burlington. Everyone be safe in the snow tonight. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Absolutely. Yeah, I got everybody. Okay. Because the one time I forgot, so I'm not going to forget again. As I always say, you know, please take the time to volunteer for something. We always appreciate new faces and ideas as we help to keep Burlington a wonderful and great place to live. Our election is April first this year, so make sure you get out and vote. That's all I got. Paul?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think Mike alluded to it earlier, but on Wednesday evening, we'll be starting the budget process with the Ways and Means Committee. So that's pretty much just about every Wednesday night from now to May. So if any of the board members would like to join us at any of those sessions, please let us know. It's all, it's always a benefit for us to have, you know, one of our elected board members there with us if anybody's available for those meetings.
What time are those meetings?
I think they bumped it up to six-thirty or seven this year. They may have bumped it up to six-thirty, but I will check on that for you. But almost every Wednesday night, not, not every night will they be reviewing our budgets that report to the select board. But it's a, it's a long process and we're looking forward to getting it started and finished hopefully in anticipation of May town meeting. So.
Can you send us maybe a schedule of all the departments?
Yes.
That would be good.
Very good. All right. If there's something else, let's take a motion to adjourn. Okay, motion made in second. All's a favor. Aye, opposed, abstain, five, zero, zero. Good night, everybody.